Barry, I think there's a desire to appoint State Street Bank and Trust Company as a custodian. If you'd like to introduce the resolution, that would be great.
Thank you. You have a resolution before you to have State Street as the custodian for the university's investments. We have had a longstanding relationship with J.P. Morgan Chase that probably goes back to the 1980s for custodial services. In recent years, we've had some challenges in working with Chase. We have not been happy with the timeliness of reports. We've had some issues with their ability to present reports at a year-end accounting for our fiscal financial audits. And more importantly, we are using a legacy system to do our investment accounting. And one of the questions that we've raised with Chase is the extent to which they could, we could outsource that work to them. And after receiving answers that were not completely satisfactory, we decided to go out and do an RFP for investment services. We contacted three of the major firms doing this. J.P. Morgan Chase happens to be one, State Street is another, and Bank of New York was the third. Bank of New York did not respond to our request for information. J.P. Morgan Chase and State Street did. And after listening to the presentations and evaluating the information that we had, we decided that we would go ahead and recommend that State Street handle the custodial services for the university. And we'd like that to take effect as of January 1st of 2010.
The resolution's in front of us. I'll move the resolution, then I'll also open it for questions and other considerations. So moved?
Yes.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Any questions, comments?
I just have a caveat. And the caveat is with the TPA, using PeopleSoft, there's a history of a lot of glitches. We've got to be careful with PeopleSoft.
Right, right.
That was one of the pluses as well, is that they're very conversant in PeopleSoft and so would further facilitate the use of CUNY first.
State Street has a record in dealing with PeopleSoft and interfacing with PeopleSoft. J.P. Morgan did not have that history.
Oh, I know. I'm aware of that. If you don't use PeopleSoft, can you go to Accenture?
No, we're committed to go with PeopleSoft. And the important thing is that the PeopleSoft, the software does not have investment accounting in it. So in a sense, what we're going to be doing is really just doing what they call a spreadsheet upload into our financials.
And then you'll do the interface. You'll do the interface yourself here?
Yes, we will.
They better give us a financial discount.
Sorry?
They better give us a discount.
Yes.
[laughing]
Always.
Later, Kay, you'll explain all that to me.
[laughing] Have Mac do it. It's old man.
There being no further questions or comments, the only one's favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Vice President Malave to discuss the current status and situation with the state budget, the city budget, as well as our budget request for the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone, and good to see you again. Let me first tell you what you have before you. There are two documents that are key documents. One, you've seen the budget resolution under request that is accompanied by the Blue Book, which is the one that has the most of the narrative for the budget request, as well as most of the detailed tables, which I will not be going through this afternoon. I will, however, be going through the PowerPoint presentation that is before you, that is entitled the 2010/11 Budget Request. But what I'd like to do first is just sort of lay the context and in effect, give you the report on the state and city budgets in the first instance, because that'll lay the groundwork and the framework for the discussion of the budget request. And in fact, if you can go to the PowerPoint presentation and go to the page, I'll go to the first page, in which you'll see the current budget conditions, the national contracts, and the outlook for 2011. Well, we start off with the budget conditions in the state of New York in the current year. And many of you have been keeping abreast of the financial reports of the, what is now estimated to be a $3.2 billion budget portfolio for the state of New York. That $3.2 billion figure was announced on Friday when the New York State Budget Division issued its mid-year report, which is required from the Budget Division every quarter. The last quarter, in fact, the last time I think we met, the state was projecting a current-year budget deficit of $2.1 billion. So between the last time that we met and today, the state deficit has grown by $1.1 billion. And so you could, and I'll come back to the challenges of just presenting to the CUNY budget in the current year. The state has also revised its estimate of the budget deficit for next year from $4.6 billion to $6.8 billion. And that is the year in which we will be requesting resources, and it's an important number to take into account. And that figure rises to $14.8 billion as a projected deficit. That's up from $13.3 billion that the Budget Division had estimated back in the first quarter report. So as you can see, the budget deficit condition of the state of New York deteriorates, particularly in fiscal 2012, which is when the scheduled billions of dollars in federal stimulus leave or scheduled out of the New York state finances. As you know, the federal government came up with its investment programs, its program to assist the states. And for the state of New York, that represented roughly $5 billion a year in discretionary dollars that it used to sustain and to avert major, major reductions in both 2010 and 2011, mostly in the area of education. And we were beneficiaries of that, and that has helped stabilize the state budget. But in fiscal 2012, that stimulus package is scheduled to go away. So you recall that last year, at the beginning of the fiscal crisis, the university sustained $68.8 million in budget reductions. We were able to manage those reductions, if you recall, albeit with some stress on the campuses. We were able to protect the core services and academic system support services, but it nevertheless had a real impact in last year. What the governor is proposing as part of the plan to deal with a $3.2 billion deficit is a number of things. It's $1.8 billion in across-the-board reductions to state agencies and spending in local assistance, most of which affects education and healthcare, and about $1.2 billion in other actions, whether that be actions that'll generate more revenue or actions that'll improve collections of debts and better debt management for a total of $1.2. But the key component is $1.8 million in across-the-board reductions. The governor had announced about a month ago the initial installment of $500 million against that $1.8 billion in cuts and recommended a reduction in CUNY senior colleges of $53 million as a result of our contribution to that $500 million plan. That was in addition to other cuts that were made in higher education, $90 million for the State University of New York, and at the time, $36 million for the Higher Education Services Corporation. So of the $500 million, about $180 million, or nearly, or over a third, was targeted to higher ed. Just put that on one corner. The governor had also advised the legislature that that was only the down payment on what was then a $2.1 billion problem, which rose to $3 billion. And the governor recently announced and put together a menu of options for the legislature to consider, and that was yet another $1.3 billion to add to the .5 for that $1.8. And that included across-the-board reductions of mostly 10% against unexpendable expenditures for the state of New York and for local governments and entities, with the exception of the education sector, which the governor had recommended cuts to no greater than 4.5%. Nevertheless, that was the package. For CUNY, the community colleges and the City University of New York are included in the local assistance budget as aid to local governments. And as a consequence, now invited the community colleges to share in the budget reduction proposal. So in addition to the $53 million for the senior colleges, now there's $9.9 million in recommended reductions to aid for the community colleges. So the total challenge for the university at this point is a $63 million reduction in public support that is now before the legislature under consideration. In addition to that, the governor has proposed similarly reductions to State University of New York community colleges. And in addition to that, I had referenced earlier, the Higher Education Services Corporation as a state agency, meaning despite $36 million. Now, in local assistance with the TAP program that's funded, the governor's recommended a reduction of $26 million. That 10% across-the-board reduction amounts to what is being recommended by the executive, a $120 decrease in the award schedule for students receiving TAP. So what we're looking at is a reduction in financial aid for the students. That is also being considered by the legislature as we speak. So the total package, and there are a few other reductions that are being recommended in higher education programs, special programs in the private sector, bond aid, and a few other programs that are administered by the State Education Department. In total, the higher education sector is staring at about $241 million in cuts against the $1.8 billion in cuts that the governor is recommending and is now before the legislature. And I say, you know, before the legislature, we're not certain exactly what they're intending to do. The governor has scheduled a special session for November 10th to invite the legislature to consider his proposals, perhaps any other proposals that the both Assembly and Board of the Senate represent. For the university, obviously, it is a repeat of last year. What do we do? We have the mid-year challenge. Our initial response is that we're working with the governor and the legislature to try to deal with the budget challenges. We recognize that we need to share in the sacrifices that have to be made in the state of New York. We want to be treated fairly, of course, in this context. We want to make sure that we protect our core mission in academic support and civil services. And that is our charge, that is the mandate that the chancellor has given us. And I believe that we are, you know, we're close to getting there, obviously. As the chancellor has indicated in his testimony, this clearly puts a, it hampers our plans for investment in the university at the time that we have tremendous enrollment growth. You've all seen the numbers. The enrollment at the community colleges is up on an FTE basis 13%, and to senior colleges up 6.5%. So it's clear that we have much more to do and we have great demand at the university where we are. And we're dealing with it. But we also recognize that we need to manage it. And I think that between the actions that we have taken thus far, and I think you'll recall at this committee when I was reporting on the adopted budget, that the question for us three months from now would be whether or not the budget would hold. And we have taken and made provisions with the campuses. We did the initial allocation that we were, there was probably a better than 50% chance that it would not hold, and that it needed to set aside appropriate reserves. So we have, and the colleges, notwithstanding the challenges, have set aside some reserves. And we have some capacity to deal with it, but it's clearly going to stress it on the university's budget. But we believe there's a path to get through this year if we treat it fairly. We are concerned, obviously, about the long-term effects. These cuts are recurring. And while we're able to use one-time reserves and colleges are able to go into their rainy day funds, there's only so many of those that are available. And so we obviously have to be very concerned about the future. And I think you've heard the chancellor mention before at board meetings, the budget working groups that he has established for us to engage in the serious kind of work, the analytical work, the budget work that needs to be done in order to plan properly. So I will, we will be doing all of that. We continue to do that. We'll have more information on November 10th, 11th, or 12th, or whenever the legislature acts. But, and we're not certain whether they're going to act or not. It's conceivable that they won't act. And that what will happen is the $3.2 billion challenge that the state faces basically rolls into 2011. And so the only question is when you're dealing with it, are you going to be dealing with it now or are you going to be dealing with it later? And I'm not going to predict what the legislature's going to do, except that we're planning for various options and various actions or lack of actions by the legislature to make sure that we get through our fiscal year and we get through our academic year, making sure that the investments that we need to make are making, and that the plans that we need to put into place to position ourselves properly for 2011 are being considered properly by the government administration. So that's the backdrop on the state side. On the city side, there's an election tomorrow.
We'll talk about the negatives next one.
We'll come back to questions before we go into the budget request. The city of New York, and I think some of you have read some of these reports, they were a bit more conservative in their revenue estimates going forward. And so they find themselves no doubt challenged, and no doubt they waited to see what the legislature is going to do to them before they then figure out what they're going to pass on to us. But the fiscal situation is not as, it's not deteriorating as quickly, in part because they didn't make the kind of estimates, they didn't have the kind of rules and scenarios that can only, that the Albany budget had included in their enactment back in April. So I think the situation's a little bit better. However, it is, it wouldn't surprise me if we get some significant budget challenges there as well. I just don't believe that it's going to be as significant as the budget challenges that the state of New York is facing. So that's the backdrop.
[laughing]
That's the backdrop. And I can take questions now, and then we'll go straight into the budget request message, whatever the pleasure of the committee. Okay. So let's just continue with the presentation on page three. So all of that notwithstanding, the university continues what we believe to be the appropriate budget message. In fact, it's even more appropriate under the circumstances. And that is the CUNY compact, which we posited in the first instance, that we need a budget approach that, and a budget message that includes shared responsibilities, partnerships, that is more than one entity's responsibility for financing the needs of the university. And so we're going to continue the CUNY compact. And as a reminder, let me just, on page four, go over what the key elements of the compact are. And that is, we believe as a public university, that the public still has the lion's share of responsibility for financing the needs of the university. And that continues to be our message here. We would like the state and the city to fund 100% of the mandatory cost increases. Those are largely the costs associated with fringe benefits and energy and the contracts that the state and city political leadership has signed off on. And we want them to pay for a share, but just a share, of the investment program. And the commitment of the university is that we will find a way through our other partners of financing the other shares of the investment program. And as you know, those shares are the three groups. There are the friends of the university through a continued emphasis and perhaps even more so on philanthropy, notwithstanding the market conditions. We believe that's a continued source of revenue in what we began several years ago. This university, in ramping up our philanthropy, needs to, in effect, be redoubled under the circumstances. The university, another key player. We continue to receive a considerable amount of public support. It may not be exactly what we think we ought to have, but it's nevertheless considerable. And we get considerable revenues from tuition, and we have a responsibility to always reshape our budget, always look at opportunities for efficiencies and productivity, and that work continues. And we require the self-financing of our investment opportunities by pushing the colleges and the university administration to continue to do that. And then finally, the students through two components, a component of increased enrollment growth. Now, as you can tell from the numbers that I mentioned earlier, there are limitations on enrollment growth, and this budget message recognizes that. But nevertheless, we believe that there'll be some modest growth in the future. That'll generate additional revenue for the system to plow into investment. The idea is that it go for investment, and it doesn't go for the mandatory costs. Hopefully, we'll get some consideration. And in this case, we're recommending a 2% increase in tuition, which is $45 per semester at the senior colleges, and $30 per semester at the community colleges, much less than the 15% that we did this past year, which we did under extraordinary circumstances of the state. So this is more, much more, in fact. If we go back to the original compact, and we only talked about increases that were tied to an index, the higher education index across the country for public universities is pegged at 2%, and that's what we're pegging this proposal. And as is always the case, three things are true here. The TAP program in the state of New York, which is a very generous program, continues to fund fully all the, whatever increases are in place for public universities. Just as a reminder, our tuition is currently at $4,600 for the senior colleges, excuse me, and $3,150 for the community colleges. The state of New York has a program for tuition assistance that it fully covers up to $5,000 for the most needy students. So all the needy students don't pay anything, haven't paid in 25, 30 years, we will continue not to pay. The chancellor has made a commitment that students who are nevertheless fiscally challenged, albeit with a modest tuition increase, will get the kind of assistance they will need and they will not lose in matriculation. That commitment continues. And the federal government, as part of the similar proposals that the governor and, excuse me, that the president and the legislature are enacting, increases to Pell grants to the students by $200. So there are a number of things that are happening that I know will protect the needy students at the university, and that's an important thing to remember as we move forward.
Can I ask, I keep hearing about students who aren't protected by TAP or Pell. Do you have a sense of which of our, what categories of our students who with incomes under, say, $50,000 are not protected by either TAP or Pell?
Well, the...
Is it the undocumented students?
Well, you have, clearly the undocumented student, you have the international students, obviously. Then you also have a class of students that are the so-called independent students, where the state of New York has a schedule that if you're a certain age, you could be an independent student, not living at home, have an income of $7,000, and get no more than a $3,000 TAP award.
Based on what, your, the family's income you rely on?
Based on their income. But the state of New York has never adjusted that schedule to go up to the current level. So right now, we have a tuition of $4,600, but the maximum award for that class of students is only $3,000, which was a big concern when we served on the Commission for Higher Ed, that that would be one of the reforms in the tougher. So that's clearly one class. So those are largely the classes of students that are going to be impacted.
And do you have a sense of what, just roughly, what percentage of our student body, the senior colleges and the community colleges, fall into one of those categories where they're not being protected by Pell or TAP?
I would think that if I had to guess, it would be around maybe 10% of the population. Because the other piece is that we have a lot of scholarship funds that the colleges use. And in fact, many of the colleges use foundation resources and the like that are sort of off balance and it's hard for us to see. But clearly, the colleges go out of their way to help those students with those private funds meet the costs associated with any...
And do those students fit into the chancellor's program of holding harmless students who can't afford the tuition?
Well, that's what the chancellor means when he says, for those students who are challenged, it's an obligation and responsibility of the colleges to find a way. Now, we have some modest resources that we made available in the current year for a class of students. We have some employment opportunities that we made available when we had the big tuition increase. But even before we had the big tuition increase, that was always a mantra of this chancellor to make sure that no student is at risk of matriculation by virtue of a modest tuition increase.
Benno, the majority in that group are international students. And for them, for those students to get into the United States with the proper visas and so forth, they have to certify that they have the financial wherewithal to not only pay tuition but to live. And so for many of those students, while they are not covered by state or federal financial aid, they do have the financial wherewithal. So when you whittle that down, it's a much smaller population.
What's about part-time students? They're not...
Well, part-time students are eligible for federal Pell grants.
They are?
They are. And that's one of the important distinctions between the federal program and the state.
They don't get...
Well, there's a limited part-time program for Pell grants.
Is this a small part-time TAP program?
But this targeted tuition increase assumes that in this election year, we get this.
I'm sorry.
This increase assumes that we get this. I'm being facetious. But in terms of this election year, that we're going to ask them to pass this tuition increase.
Well, we're going to ask them to give us the, they can't pass it. We're the only ones who could pass a tuition increase. But they must increase our revenue appropriation order for us to capture that revenue. This is what we have done for the past four years as part of our compact request. And in some years, in fact, in some of the very good years, Vice Chancellor Dobbin will remind me, the legislature was so inclined to sort of buy out the tuition component on the proposal. Well, I'm not sure they'll be in a position to do that in the current...
This is probably, this is probably the best scenario that we can envisage for the students going forward, given the kind of climate that we are coming into for the next fiscal year.
And really, the choice is, you know, whether we have, albeit a modest investment program going forward to meet this growing, growing student enrollment. And we believe that the 2% is modest, is consistent with our approach. And more importantly, it goes back to what I suggested earlier, that this is how you partner with the state under extraordinarily difficult times. And I think that, and this is how you partner with the university, this is how you partner with friends and philanthropists at the university, where they see that everyone is making a contribution, albeit a small one and albeit a challenging one, depending on who you are.
Could I ask one more question about the compact in this context? You know, given the reality that it's unlikely to get any increased funding for, if you get mandated for any growth...
The way the compact has been structured over the years, it's, I can't imagine how we're going to successfully get the state to give us more money for their share of the compact. Is there any talk, or is there a way to, as part of, you know, the component that you've always looked at as the university's effort, which is productivity pieces within the university, to take a chunk of what used to be university-related activities, but to go through what state laws exist that one could propose changes to, to provide productivity abilities of whether state can, whether city university can more productively use its resources and almost offer to give the state credit as that would help counter their match to do state law changes that we would propose to them?
This is part of the mandate that we've given to one of the working groups, the three working groups that we established. One, dealing with drilling deep into the bedrock of what defines the operating needs. The second, looking at our monetizing whatever physical assets that we have that could be reprogrammed into the budget. And the third, which is, in one sense, the most challenging and far-reaching, is to really look at the regulatory environment under which we work and the laws that govern the university, both the state laws and laws that we've developed here through the bylaws of the university.
But to propose it as part of what you would give credit as the state's share?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay.
Great. Okay. If you could turn to page five, just to go over the high-level budget numbers. This was the requested appropriations. And you would start at the left-hand column of the current 2011 budget. You'll see we get roughly $1.3 billion in state support, a little under $300 million in city support, and a billion dollars that we generate in tuition for a total budget of $2.2 billion. tuition for a total budget of two point six billion dollars, that is our current base. Our mandatory needs going forward in two thousand and eleven are scheduled currently at ninety-one point seven million dollars. And that is, again, largely, as I said earlier, driven by both fringe benefits and the, and contractual obligations. The good piece is, on the energy side, that's a deflationary environment that we are in the energy and the utilities, so there's not a whole lot of increase costs associated with energy, so we call it a little break, but not a whole lot, given that the healthcare costs and the pension costs and all this is needed. So you can see that, that's what dominates the amount that we're seeking in state support. Moving forward, you'll see the shaded areas where we're looking for the programmatic requests. And here is the investment program, and here's how we're proposing to finance the investment program, with twenty-eight point eight million dollars in additional state support and city, and state support. And that amounts to two point two percent increase. We consider that to be relatively modest for an investment program. On the state side, as you can see, we're asking for an increase in revenue appropriations of thirty-three point eight million to help accommodate that investment program for a grand total of one hundred and fifty-five million dollars in requested appropriations to cover, to cover the, this particular request. And I should just add that, and I'll come back to this in a minute, on the state side, the requested appropriations are also on the community college side. Unlike the senior colleges, the community colleges are funded on a formula basis that increases support automatically for aid, for additional enrollment. It sort of reimburses. And so this tremendous surge that we've experienced over the past couple of years that we continue to schedule the next year is generating additional support, and it's reflected in those numbers. So these numbers reflect what we anticipate we'll be getting as a result of the additional state aid that we're going to plow into the investment program.
How much of the tuition, the tuition increase?
The...
The thirty-three?
The thirty-three million dollars, the tuition increase component, I think it's twenty-eight...
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight million dollars. And I have a funding source on the next couple of pages that I'll review that. All right, so one point four billion dollars is the overall request, state aid, a little under three hundred million, city support. The tuition number goes up by thirty-four for a total request of two point seven billion dollars for the university. The next page, next schedule, is for the total requested increases, five of these areas. And you'll find, and you'll see, that these are very familiar terms because they go back to the master plan that this board enacted, which has a component of the flagship environment, which where we anchor many of our academic initiatives, and principally, that's represented in the desire to increase number of full-time faculty, the research environment that is dominated by the interest that we have in the subsequent investments in research that follow the big investments in the capital side, in our science buildings as part of the decades of science, that's at eleven point three million dollars. Student services, which in this case, in this instance, we're focusing on basically services for students with disabilities and the healthcare centers of the university. We have been doing some work, we recognize that we need to make some investments in healthcare services in a couple of those areas. Last year, the budget message of the university was focused on financial aid, career counseling, and veteran services. This sort of shifts a little bit the focus to some areas that were not the dominant focus then. The other key piece, and then you'll find this in the materials, is on educational technology. We believe very strongly that we need to do much, much more in this university, in this area. We don't believe we're going to meet our challenges of enrollment and meeting the needs of all this enrollment growth unless we really ramp up significantly what we need to do in every, in the area of educational technology, and that is reflected here as well. The other good, big piece of this facility improvement is a large number, and that is dominated by a significant request for four new facilities that are coming online, the most significant one being McRever's academic complex one. It's a very significant facility, it's about two hundred thousand additional square feet, it's a state-of-the-art science building, it's going to require lots of resources when it opens up. It is scheduled to open up this summer and this September, and about seven million dollars will be needed just to meet the engineering, custodial, security, and technical services of the building. We have also buildings at Brooklyn College, the West Quad Building, the needs for that building. We have a media center at Leven College that needs to be staffed properly, otherwise the initial investment, the capital side will go by the wayside. And we also have the Roosevelt House at Hunter College. Those are the key components of the building. Those are not insignificant costs that are, that need to be reflected, that need to be understood. We will have to then, you know, deal with the challenges of financing it once we know what our budget is, but it's important that we know what they are.
Educational technology people, or...
It's both. It's a lot of people, a lot of faculty development, but it's both. It's both infrastructure, support on the campuses that are non-capital in nature, but it's the human infrastructure that needs to be developed across the university to really sort of lay the groundwork for the kind of educational technology that we need.
Do you call software development and all of that capital, or, I mean, their average life is in such that you would...
Well, they're both. There's a...
The answer is it depends. If it's part of a system, so let's say software security first, is capital eligible? If you buy software, put it on your PC, and wanted to PC, it wouldn't...
Or just the wiring? I mean, when we're looking at a lot of the buildings, they're just not wired.
Why would you generally be capital eligible?
We try to use that capital budget as much as I can.
Yeah, but that's not, like, so wiring would not be in this.
No, no, I agree. It totally depends, and you get, you know, money's money in this area, but clearly the human infrastructure. The need to hire full-time faculty that are averse in technology is very important. The training that exists, we have thousands of faculty members in this university that need to be trained in educational technology. That is not, those are expensive propositions, because that's the workforce that we need to strengthen in this area. And so it's a combination of both infrastructure and human. On page seven...
Ernesto, could I just...
Sure.
Why would the facility improvements not be in the capital budget?
Well, there are certain things that are, that a laboratory needs. For example, you have a little laboratory upgrade in the sciences, it may be a hundred thousand dollars to retrofit and renovate, a minor renovation in the library. I would tell you that, and I don't know exactly all the details, but the capital budget will include a considerable amount of facility improvements. But there are a couple of components that are, that are often supported by the operating budget. It wouldn't be...
If you paint the building, that's not capital eligible.
Right, right. You would place your rule if it's not capital eligible. There are accounting rules, Barrick, they all explain it either. It's hard to imagine things that used to be capital are not anymore.
Okay. We'll have to change that. Okay. Okay, well, on page seven, I think I just repeated everything that I just went over. I won't do that again. On page eight, you'll see finer detail here of the specific breakdown between senior and community. You'll see a minor entry there for the School of Pharmacy, which is a planning amount. There's a lot of work that's going on in developing and constructing, you know, potential plans. This facilitates that effort, hopefully, for a School of Pharmacy that is, again, part of the university's request, and totals the investment program of seventy point seven million dollars. On page nine, you'll see the mandatory needs and how that ninety-two million dollars breaks out between senior and community, between fringe and building rentals, and the OTPS inflation, and the salary income, which are ones that are driven by the contractual agreements that are provided. On page ten, to deal with trustee Shaw's question of the funding sources, the breakdown between senior and community colleges, you'll see the breakdown here, the state and city mandatory needs at eighty point five million dollars, programmatic initiatives at eleven point seven, the tuition increase component is twenty-eight million dollars, the enrollment growth element associated with tuition revenue coming in is five, and then we have the restructuring and the philanthropy components totaling one hundred and sixty-two point four million dollars. On the next page, you can just see the...
The enrollment, excuse me, the enrollment book isn't assumed across all campuses? It assumes that some campuses have more?
It's a general zero point five percent, but as you may have detected from previous proposals, in previous years, we had the compact that was based on revenue generated at one and a half percent, and here we are at thirteen percent, eight percent, six percent increases. It's a general number at this point. We recognize that some campuses will be a little bit further up, and others may be flat, others may be in a declining mode, but at this point, we just sort of assume that the zero point five is a fairly static number. It's not, it's not a lot of growth, but you're right. It could fluctuate depending on when we go about going, but as we construct the budget, it is across the board.
Because aren't there some campuses that are at beyond full capacity, or that not?
But that's, that's why, that's why I recognize that. We probably have, I think, Dovin will always say we have, we have the MCSC, and we have everyone else. But it's also true that, that I think that while we're clearly challenged by our physical space, there are other opportunities that we're challenging the campuses to take advantage of. I think if Borough Manhattan Community College has demonstrated that there are days and weekends and evenings that can be deployed much more efficiently, and we're calling on the rest of the colleges to begin to sort of move in that direction as well.
Have any campuses restricted enrollment on account of no enrollment?
Benno, we had a very thorough discussion about enrollment strategies this morning with the council of presidents. What we did do is cut off enrollment at some of our community colleges a couple of months, month, two months before we traditionally have done it, because there was just, the system was so stressed that we could not morally, you know, take in more students and assume that we could do the job that we did. So what we're embarking upon now, we started an enrollment management process two to three years ago, but it's really revamped up to a very important activity here at the university. It's going to require very close monitoring, real strong management in the way that we utilize our facilities, different modalities of instruction. That's why we put in some more money on educational technologies, because this university is only at a very nascent stage of development in its ability to use technology as a real modality for instruction. So we have some real challenges ahead, and I am, I believe that in the next few years, we're going to continue to see large interest in students attending the university. And the problem is being compounded by retention rates really spiking at the university. That is a result of, I would submit two things, the very aggressive faculty hiring that we've done. We've increased the full-time faculty from fifty-four hundred in nineteen ninety-nine. We project it'll be at about seventy-one hundred this spring, and that makes a difference. Let nobody tell you otherwise, having full-time faculty in front of the classroom does make a difference in student learning. And third, most of our campuses have increased the quality of the incoming students, so as a result of that, the students are taking more classes, and they're succeeding in recognition numbers. So we are, we are being challenged by our own successes in what we've done, but also the economy being as poor as it is requires that the university make itself available to students who are out of jobs, looking for jobs, need to shore up their skills. So we have real challenges here with a physical plant that is not infinite, and ways of utilizing the campuses in more creative ways than we had before. But I think we're up to the challenge, but it's going to require a lot of vigilance and very, very strong management on behalf of each of our presidents, and we discussed this at great length this morning. And I think we're up, we're up to it.
I want to congratulate, the Office of Enrollment Management has been very aggressive about getting the word out, at least to the public schools that I know, about how, you know, you used to have rolling enrollment until May, June, July, and they have been letting the word get out that they may be cutting it off as early as April this year, but they are getting that word out to the schools. And so it's having an impact upon the students, so that's the good news.
I would add that for those campuses that closed a little early this year, the colleges worked very closely together to make sure that that student understood that there were opportunities available at another community college. So the student came in and wanted to go to LaGuardia, and LaGuardia had to cut off earlier than they would otherwise have been. That college was directed to then take that student and advise them and assist them in getting to another university unit. So, and I think the colleges worked very closely to make sure that that happened.
What's the trend line on restructuring and philanthropy percentages?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
The trend line, it looks like about three point four percent is going to be restructuring and three point four percent is philanthropy. How has that percentage changed historically? Is that smaller this year than last year?
It's a little smaller in recognizing the market conditions particularly. We felt we needed to just ramp it down a little bit, given the challenges, and that many of these funds were underwater, and I expect that to change moving forward, but it was a little bit less than last year's.
And restructuring as well?
A little bit, correct, given that we took a sixty-eight point three million dollar hit last year.
And following your question, Terry, and piggybacking on trustee Shaw's question, the big moves are yet to come as we have discussions with state government on how we can account for revenue by changing the way in which we do business. And I would put that under productivity and efficiencies. And we've started those discussions. SUNY and CUNY are working very much in tandem, shoulder to shoulder, to get some of those ideas across, and I suspect that we're going to be successful at some point where you'll start to see that component of the compact really spiking.
Thank you.
Okay. And speaking of trends, the last two pages, whatever, next to the last two pages.
I'd like to comment on chairman Schmidt's remarks. It's certainly going to be a challenge for this university to maintain the openness that it's mandated for the community colleges and the comprehensive colleges. The idea of cutting off enrollment early is certainly an expedient, but it had to be done in order to maintain the quality that we require at CUNY. But at some point, we will have to maintain also that openness to high school students' access to the community colleges, and it's going to be a challenge.
As I thought to say, on pages twelve and thirteen, you see a graphic of exactly what we're talking about when we look at the university enrollment at nearly two hundred and sixty thousand. The first page is on headcount, and you can see an even greater jump in two thousand and nine on the FTE. So this is, this really tells a story of why, why we need to make the investments, and I know we're going to be challenged in how we make those investments going forward, but we need to, we need to lay out in our budget message what our needs are, and that is what is our attempt here. And then finally, on page fourteen and fifteen, just to give you a sense of what the competition is, the New York City area tuition levels, and where we are at forty-six hundred, and where we propose to be at forty-six ninety as a modest contribution to the investment program. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes my...
May I ask, is the plan to hire two hundred and fifty new full-time faculty, will that increase the size of the full-time faculty, or...
No, that would be, it would represent a net increase in full, that is our, it is to increase the number of full-time faculty, the absolute number.
Can I also recommend that you put in what the, New Jersey?
Okay.
Because we're seeing people from New Jersey coming over, because we're a bargain today.
They're not that far away.
Yeah, I mean, we're seeing them coming over. We're, we're seeing them coming over.
What is the process from this point forward, Ernesto? The timing of delivery and the lobbying effort and all the way?
Well, I guess I heard something, speak to the lobbying effort. The, right now, the, this is transmitted to the, to the executive. First, the board will have a, a budget special hearing on the budget request as part of this regular hearing process. The board will consider the budget request at the end of the month, I believe, on November 23rd. The, the state budget division and others have already issued a call out, but they recognize that both in the case of CUNY and SUNY, you operate on a different timetable and the boards won't act until November. We expect the governor to issue the executive budget recommendations at some point in January after the State of the State address. We will then know exactly what, what our challenge is. Between now and then, there'll be lots of discussion between us and the budget division and others on our budget message. The same budget message will be delivered to the, to the mayor and the city council. They, they operate on a slightly different schedule. The mayor's executive budget is not issued until, actually, in April, early May, albeit, although in, in, in January, they issue a preliminary budget. So we'll get a lens on the city finances in February, but the actual executive budget that's akin to the governor's executive budget in January is not issued by the mayor until April or May. Jay, if you want to add anything on the, on the political process, but the, but it, it, you know, the legislature will then take over. The legislature will invite the chancellor to testify in Albany. You'll all be, you know, briefed on that testimony, and the legislature is supposed to have a budget adopted by April 1st. We shall see. That is the process.
Nothing to add on the record, right?
Nothing on the record.
So we need to move the resolution so that we can bring this to the full board on?
The 23rd.
On the 23rd of this month, the budget resolution.
Do you have, is it accepted?
They have. Everybody has the budget resolution before the next. But it was mailed to everybody.
Want to read it too?
Yes, I could, we could, we could read the resolution. I could, it's, it's a very...
Where is it?
It's supposed to be in front. It's supposed to be part of your, here it is. He has one.
What's it attached to?
Oh, it's behind the...
Oh, it's attached to the mess. Got it. After the dormitory feed.
There it is.
Basically, page six of the, that's, that's a bunch of...
The last, the last slide.
I'll move it.
Any questions? Comments? If there's none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Any other questions? Any other comments? Let's go Yankees. See you next morning.
I hope they don't come home empty.